We'll call the Pennington County Commission meeting for December 4th, 2012, to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the pledge led by Commissioner Ken Davis.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish to make any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly Henness.
Morning Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, I place the following three items for your consideration on the consent agenda: Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from November 20th, 2012; approval of the vouchers in the amount of $325,785.59; and approval of the 2013 Humane Society Animal Shelter Control Agreement submitted by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any of those items from the agenda, from the consent agenda? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item eight, which is a lien release request.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you for hearing us. I'm Todd Schwager, volunteer attorney with Habitat for Humanity. To my right is Scott Engmann, the Executive Director of Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity. We come before you, as we have in the past, requesting a forgiveness, a release of a county liens on a home that was and is a Habitat home that the owner of, which had some pre-existing county liens and also additional liens during the time she owned the home. She returned it to Habitat due to her inability to make the payments on a mortgage that was custom designed for her with no interest, but her situation worsened while she was living there. So, she voluntarily returned the home, but of course with a quick claim deed, you get it back with all the existing liens. The liens, as you see in my letter, amounted to just under $5,000 over a period of a number of years. And again, as before, we're not requesting that the liens be forgiven against the individual who they are against, only against the property, so that we can get another low-income family into this home without this additional expense. We're open for any questions that you may have. We appreciate the time you're giving us.
Don't you guys check before you give these houses out, that they got liens on them or something?
Well, the check has gotten, the checking system has gotten better since this happened. We've seen a couple sneak through, and we try to avoid that. Now, we're learning, we've learned our lesson, so to speak, is how it goes. We were a lot less stringent back in the early days of the program, and I think that's what led to this.
Any other questions? Shannon, do you have any comments on this one? Do you have any comments on this issue?
No, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, then don't comment.
Why not? You'd be able to comment if it's because you don't know anything about it, shouldn't hurt any of you, should it?
That's reserved for us.
Oh, I was thinking somebody else would.
Any other comments or questions? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to take the lien off of the property, Lot 11, Dakota Subdivision Number One, the City of Rapid City, Book Seven, Platts, on page 82. Leave it on the individual.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If he wasn't doing this voluntarily, I'd say that they should, we should sue him for it, but since he didn't look like he's getting paid for all this, I hate to do that.
Spoken like a true attorney.
Fraternalism is alive and well, right?
Yes.
Okay, if there are no further comments, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next item is item 9A, alcoholic beverage license renewals. And unless you take eight minutes, we'll have to take a recess until 9:15.
Let's see, I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. This is a time for the annual renewals for the liquor sales licenses, and I can read the list if you'd like. This is just, the paperwork has been completed, the fees have been paid, the form is submitted as required by the state, and I can read them off if you'd like, or the list was in the packet.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Julie, I noticed that shipwrecked was on here, but it's not on here.
Which was from the sheriff.
Yeah, so I was curious if there was something, some further information we needed to know. Do you want to use mine?
It's not going to help you.
It's just that it's not on there and...
Kevin, as far as you know, there wasn't any problem with the shipwreck.
That's all I just wanted to know.
Probably just...
That's what I thought, but maybe we better check.
What's the wish of the commission? Do you wish the list read or not?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've never done this before, and I've never heard the commission do it, but I would make a motion to approve the liquor licenses as presented by the Auditor's Office with the time stipulation of 9:17.
Thank you.
Actually...
Can we do that? I don't know.
Well, do we have a second? But the 9:17 is not significant because we're not yet to the item that has 9:15 deadline. So, we're good.
Okay.
Do you want to remove your 9:17 stipulation? Is there a second?
I'll second it. He's removed the 9:17, right?
We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license renewals. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Sing a song.
Oh, I don't even sing in church. KJ will be handling the supplements. It is a public hearing, so she can present her information, and you can just ask for public hearing notice at 9:15. I would think that would be sufficient. She can cover them all until then.
Good morning. KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. We have a number of supplements as we prepare for the end of 2012. So, I will go through the list, and, so that we don't get ahead of ourselves here, and then go back and ask for the motions. The first supplement, these were posted for a public hearing, in the Capital Projects Fund, which is where we account for all the expenditures related to the projects that are current under construction, that include the parking structure, administration building, the courthouse, energy plant, and the evidence building. We do not budget for those in the process of preparing each year's budget. We pay the bills as they come in, and we've estimated the bills now through the end of the year. These bills are, have been being paid and will be paid as we work into the next few years of completion on this, from the bond money that has included the RZ bonds, the Build America bonds, and there was a small amount that was just a long-term debt bond. So, this basically just takes that budget out of the negatives, so that we don't close each one of those individual budgets. The administration budget includes primarily in that $327,835, the purchase of the final corner of property that I think was completed in May of this year. It includes insurance on the projects as we go forward, and some minor administration costs, which we don't capitalize as we, well, we'll capitalize the land, but those other things. And the remainder of the budgets, as I identified earlier, are parking for 1.4 million, administration for 2 million, courthouse for 10,000, energy plant for 2 million, and the evidence building, which is the primary construction in progress right now, for 4 million dollars.
KJ, what is the significance of the A, B, and C, following the statement about the bond proceeds at the bottom of that paragraph?
Oh, those are the three bonds that we entered into at the end of 2010. And A was the RZ bonds, B is the Build America bonds, and C was the general long-term obligation bonds.
Thank you. Looks like we're...
So, we'll need a motion on that one to supplement from the reserves in the Capital Projects Fund that are all bond funds. There's a little bit of interest that has been earning in those as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
KJ, when, you know, several of these parts of this project are joint efforts with the city, so are these amounts on here just the county obligation, or will we be getting payments and we'll be putting them back into the building?
This is the full expenditure, as I understand it, and I will look to Jay and Julie. There is an agreement, but we have not at this point received any funds from the city.
To answer that, we'll be expending all the expenses for all the joint projects, and eventually, I believe our agreement says at the end of 2013, then we settle up with the city, we determine the total cost of the evidence building as the largest one, and what percent of interest that they have to back pay us, that rate's been set on, and then they will start making payments.
Okay.
And that will go in as a revenue to the accumulated building fund, so it's protected, and then, and we can use it to support the bond payment or use it for other projects. But we're not expecting to have to do that until the end of 2013.
Okay, great. Just wanted to verify.
Any other questions?
With that, I do believe we are at 9:15 and could officially request a motion from the board on the Capital Project Fund budget supplement.
You'd end good. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C.
Item C is a request for budget supplements to various general fund and other fund budgets that are supported from non-budgeted revenue received in 2012. I'll go over them briefly. In the general fund election, we have a request for $18,685. This is revenue coming from HAVA funds for purchases that qualify, that we made some, purchased some additional equipment to be used at the polls, and the majority of it, as we move into going live with the new voter system, I think in a matter of days, will be having, will be receiving equipment that we have to have for that. That's all funded by HAVA, and we're working with the Secretary of State's office on that. The general fund, State's Attorney is requesting a supplement in the amount of $12,000. This is from additional revenue received in restitution. We have a request from the general fund economic assistance in the amount of $20,925. This is a specific grant funded by John T. Vikurovich that will support the Owens Project, and so we'll receive that revenue back as we spend it. In E911 Communications, there's a request for $42,500 to support salaries, and this is coming from additional revenues received for the 911 surcharge. We have a request for the Modernization and Preservation Fund. This is a new fund that was established July 1st, 2012, through the legislative process, specifically puts money aside for the Register of Deeds and to purchase equipment, and we've been, began receiving that revenue in 2000, in July. Obviously, it was not budgeted, and we'll be making equipment purchases from that. Last of all, we have a request from the Healthcare Trust Fund, $170,000 of additional revenue supported from the stop-loss reimbursement that was more than we received, and also some additional revenue for premiums. The $170,000 will support the expenditure on claims paid throughout, through the end of the year. None of these supplements that I've just outlined will reduce the reserve in the designated fund that they're being spent from, because there's revenue out there to support the expense.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
KJ, what portion of these, or any of them, if they have, is it already in their budget cycle for 2012? So, they've already been budgeted in the 2012 budget? Now, this is an additional budget to some of those or not?
The expense was not included in the original 2012 budget. For instance, like the grant for elections, we did not know how that was all going to work. The purchase of that equipment was included, was not included, and now that we've received the revenue, we'll make the expense. So, it's the revenue that is now supporting the non-budgeted expense.
What about for the 911 fund, the extra amount that increased on your telephone bill for that? Was that already in the budget?
I don't believe so. I'll let Leon, but it's to support additional staff that they...
Now, is that some of that coming from the DCI, or from the State of North Dakota, or is that just from the 911 fund?
It's all funds that came from the additional surcharge that started on July 1st, and it's supporting overtime, additional overtime because of the high fire season.
Okay. Leon, I got one question for you. I think when we do the 911 budget, we pay so much out of the 911 funds, and then don't we split that, another portion of it between the city and the county?
Yes, 911 pays, the surcharge pays about 40% of the budget, and then the rest is split, one-third, two-thirds, city-county.
So, of this $42,500, is some of that going to be split back to the city and the county?
We actually have the revenue already. We have the funds that was overcollected from the 911 surcharge that we were not budgeted for because we didn't know it would pass through the state legislature when we passed the budget last year.
Okay, so you got, you got the 911 funds, but if you're going to keep the 40%, 60%, and then of that 60%, one-third, two-thirds goes to the county and the city, is that included? Is there additional funds in that you're getting up and above this $42.5?
No, sir.
From the city and the county?
We don't, because we always expend 911 funds first.
I don't, I don't think that's true, because we have a reserve of 911 funds.
We do.
That we carry forward. I thought we always tried to even that out, so that we kept the integrity of the 40% coming from 911 funds, 60% coming from city and county.
We can certainly have the Users Board look at that.
Isn't that what we always do? Isn't that the way it's set up?
This is the first time I've had to deal with this particular situation, and we have the revenues already.
When you set your budget, though, isn't that the way you set your budget?
Yes, it is. I think part of the confusion is this. I believe it was in 2011 that we quit keeping the county's portion in the general fund, and we now budget for the revenue from the city, the revenue from the county, that's that operating transfer we do, and then the revenues that come in through the fees and Box Elder and a variety of other sources, that 911. It's all in that separate fund now. None of, there's no portion of it that we, that 40/60 that you referred to, Commissioner Holloway, that we keep over in the general fund. We still do that worksheet. In fact, I just communicated with the city two days ago, and so once we get to the point where we have all of the revenues and expenditures done at the end of the year, we hold off on that final payment from the city to bring everything into balance. And so, when we close at the end of this year, we will have this additional $42,500 in revenues and expenditures, so just bring it back right to where it was. I think we're going to be, like, very close. I did an initial review of where it would be, and we always, we always kind of hope we get pretty close to even, but we don't bill the city for that final payment, because we don't want to bill them too much or bill them too little until we get to the end of the year. So, we're still going to do that, and that will bring this $42.5 into play on both the revenue and the expenditure side.
Okay.
I have a question. State's Attorney's Office, and I don't understand how you get overcollected revenues in restitution, but it's coming out of there and going into 0444. What account is that?
That is the mental health budget. And the restitution revenue is kind of like liens. It's an unknown, you know, you have people who'll pay more because they can, and so they have some overcollected revenue there that I miss...
That's a collection that some past years may be paid up or whatever.
Right.
Well, and some of that, too, is my understanding, is blood draws, drug testing, grand jury transcripts, there's a lot of things you can't predict. I mean, you try year to year, but we've had quite a bit extra come in, so...
And it's going over to mental health?
That's what the 444 budget is. Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Is that equipment?
I was looking at the last three sets of numbers there. It's not going to, it's going to the general fund, State's Attorney, equipment, 444 is the equipment, when it's in that third line. It's kind of a language, we all know, and I looked at the wrong line.
And what happened there, Commissioner Basgrud, is we had a scanner that died on us, and with IT's help, we had to get a new scanner, had to get a new computer to run the scanner with the software. My understanding is it came out to like 11:09, and so our office administrator said we could use 12, so that we got that covered to get us through the end of the year. So, that's literally what the purpose is for.
Any other questions? Any comments?
Yeah, I have one more. We overspent, or look like we're going to overspend, our jail medical by $120,000. What's wrong?
We haven't got to that one yet.
Is that the next one?
What's the next one, if you...
Sorry.
Any further discussion on item C? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
We can list the motion that I have included for a total of $51,610 in the general fund, $42.5 in the E911 fund, $19,330 in the Modernization and Preservation Fund. Boy, they weren't thinking when they made up that fund, were they? And, last of all, the Healthcare Trust Fund.
I have one more question. Modernization and et cetera. You want $19,300, and so we got to pay that to the state?
Pay that, no, we don't. That's, that stays in the county, that revenue stays in the county. It's accumulated in the county.
All of it stays here.
No. $3 goes to, stays in the county, and $2 goes to the state.
It'll be distributed to other counties.
Correct.
That's a heck of a good deal.
And this additional funds that you're getting resulted in unexpected expenses in your office?
This piece of equipment, I was planning on exchanging it, because I was not ever happy with it when I bought it, and unfortunately, the printed portion of it died on me a month ago.
So, that's what you're using this money for?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Still open for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the supplements as outlined.
There a second?
Second.
I have a motion as a second to approve the supplement as outlined. You have the wording okay? Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item D.
This final supplement, which again is spread between budgets in the general fund, the Title III hazard, Mountain Pine Beetle, and the hazardous material fund budget will come from reserves. The request for, from the general fund election budget in the amount of $284.11 comes from a previously designated reserve that was set aside by the board, I believe, in 2010. It's part of the compliance for the have-a-funds that we receive to that tune of almost over $18,000. And in so doing that, we have to obligate a minimum amount of money of our own funds. We did that back in 2010. Now that we're making all of these expenditures for equipment, we'll clean that reserve out, take it to zero, and supplement the $284.11 into the spending authority. Also in the general fund, we have a request from the gen, from ITS for $216,000. This budget obviously has had many changes during the last 12 months and actually had, I believe, approximately $240,000 short. But there was some savings on other portions that netted the request out to $216,000. The general fund equalization office is asking for $20,000 early in the, in, in the year 2012. The move over to the Kansas City street address was not included in the 2012 budget. I think that that total rent was approximately $40,000. And about 20 has been absorbed by Shannon Rittberger's budget. So he's asking for 20,000. Then we have the general fund jail medical that is requesting 120,000. I believe Karen will speak to that. Title III is requesting $200,000 for Mountain Pine Beetle. This is actually money that is budgeted in the 2013 budget as an expense. And I believe they're moving right along. Scott can answer questions. I'm guessing Goodweather is a major player in that. So we're spending the money a little bit ahead of, of when it was normally budgeted. Any funds that don't get spent in this would revert right back to the fund balance in the Title III and be spent in 2013. Because we, this doesn't change that budget. And last of all, we have a request for $1,775 in the hazmat budget. I believe that is for some additional... There's a lot of, lot of letters in here. I'm looking for the one from, there we go. Minor equipment. This is coming from funds from the previous year's unexpended budget that have subsequently reverted back to the fund balance. They're now making some purchase of, of equipment. So of course, the major reduction to the reserve in the general fund, the total, is And I'll let Karen speak to the jail medical and any other questions the board may have.
Do you wish your...
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, I'm sure that's what it is. I just want to know what happened. I mean, that's a lot of money to be off.
Well, as we know, when we're budgeting for either economic assistance or jail medical, it's, it's actually, there are a lot of unknowns. But to put it really quite simply, what caused it? Our violent crimes that we saw over the year, this, this past year. Increase in mental health services, our length of stay doubled. We had over $90,000 of hospitalizations due to the, to the violent crimes that we saw. We saw a decrease in other agencies that were able to assist us in some of the care, increased inmates. And I know 120,000 seems a lot. It actually, that actually could be tripled if it wasn't for some of the actions that had been taken over this past year with trying to link people up with outside services on some of these crimes. Trying to link up with other health services and working with insurance companies and our close relationship with Rapid City Regional Hospital. So it's been, it was, it was a hard year. What we've done is, I'm sorry, what we did, though, however, when we knew that this was going to be happening, we actually called together a meeting. And there were several of us that came and said, what can we do differently next year? I mean, we're definitely not going to be able to control the violent crimes and, and the consequence to those. But we did come up with actually 11 solutions, our goals, I should say, that we're going to try to achieve for next year, which we think that, if anything, will reduce or even stabilize. And I can go over some of those if you want to. I think there's some really excellent ideas, very proactive.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, if I can offer just a couple of comments to build on what Karen talked about. And we do stay in close contact with Karen and try and coordinate the services that are provided. And our average daily population last year in the jail was about 470. Routinely after weekends, we're running 5:10 to up to 5:30 in the jail. So the population is up. I do think we have a higher needs population with co-occurring disorders, both when it comes to mental health and substance abuse and a lot of the reasons that Karen outlined. And one of the frustrations I have is with Indian Health Service. And I've written a letter to our congressional delegation asking for assistance with that. It's a little bit like pushing a rope, to be honest with you. And the area in particular that some of this cost got shifted to us is in the area of mental health. You know, we were two, three months out waiting for an appointment up at IHS, which is unacceptable because if we have somebody in our facility we're responsible for and they're having behavior issues, that liability rests with the county if we don't address it. So some of that has been shifted to us unfairly. And Senator Thune's office has been working aggressively with us. We're trying to get a meeting with IHS, but frankly, it's very frustrating.
Thank you, Sheriff. And if I may add one thing, what's frustrating to me is I look and hear the news and read the newspaper, oh, they're supposed to get six years in the penitentiary. But now they're going to get 300 days in the county jail. And they're supposed to get this in, but now they're going to the county jail. So yes, I guess the governor and the legislature wants to reduce the number of people in prison, but by putting them in county jails does not really help the Pennington County taxpayer all that much. In fact, it costs us money. And I don't know if that's a general trend or if it's just something I'm seeing. But I, I believe it's happening. And I saw another one last night that, oh, he should have got this in the pen, but now he's going to go to the county jail for 300 days.
Yes. Commissioner Baschek, if I can offer one comment? I do sit on the governor's criminal justice work group with the initiative he'll be talking about today in his budget address. And there'll be some legislation coming that session. I've been very vocal at the meetings about not cost shifting to the counties. And I think that message has been heard loud and clear. And to safeguard, at least Pennington County, we have three years of numbers we've benchmarked with UJS and us. So if the numbers go up or down, we'll be able to tell. And through the initiative, there's going to be a fund set up. So if there are costs shifted to the county, that there's funding available to assist the counties with some of that cost shift. So I'm optimistic that it's not going to be a cost shift. We've discussed it at length in the meetings. And there are some safeguards built in there and some data to support it. So we'll see as we go forward.
Keep up the good work.
What's that?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one from the reg, not the reg, the Director of Equalization. And I'm just wondering if his, is your budget depleted completely now or will be by the end of the year?
I'm not good enough to make it go to zero. I'm estimating now to be less than 2% down there. But I can't...
Less than 2% of your 2012 budget?
Total budget, yeah.
Still available?
When, when we get to the end of the year, I anticipate a little bit less than 2%. That's my guess at this point. And that's what I've run in the last couple of years. I'm not smart enough to estimate expenses even a month and a half out and hit zero. I, I don't think I could do that.
I bet you we can find somebody that can help you.
Well, there's still expenses to come in. And we don't always know to the penny what those are.
I have one more, Mr. Chairman. And maybe I have a couple more. So we can supplement the 2012 budget with the 2013 budget. Boy, don't let that word get out.
Well, obviously, especially, this is the Title III fund. There's just so much money there. If you spend it in 2012, it's not going to be spent...
That was my question, then it's not there.
It's not there in 2013.
And I have one more. Is emergency management...
You want to speak up there? Come on up, Scott.
KJ, you're getting tired of taking it all, huh?
Anybody for emergency management? I have one more question. That, that it looks like the LEPC has approved projects that go beyond the original $10,000 budget, so they want to supplement funds to pay for it. You know, I guess my thought is they shouldn't have done that.
Oh, they, I don't think they'll spend it.
They already have. I think.
They don't overspend, though. I, I, I didn't go to the last meeting. I had another meeting. But, but normally what they do is they know that they have this amount of money set aside. And this is actually money they carried from another year. And so something came up, and I'm sorry, I don't know what it is. But they'll do things like buy firefighter equipment, that sort of thing. And they knew they had that money from a previous year and they could spend it.
Is that money from a previous year in that designated fund? And, or is it in, in general fund?
No, it's in, it's in the hazardous material fund, which is a separate special...
That is an ongoing, period, year-to-year fund.
Right. So, so I believe that they've consistently been at a $10,000 operating budget. And I don't know if it was just last year or prior to that, that they did not spend the total budget. This year, they again had the 10,000. They're going to get some additional equipment and purchase it. That fund has a very low balance. And they, and they try to, they try to keep it that way, that they're not building up and just hanging on to it. If they get the funds, they spend it on the designated equipment that it qualifies for and that, which is why it's in that special.
Well, there could be some comments made on that theory, too, but...
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
So the total of this motion would be $356,284.11 to the general fund, an additional $200,000 to the Title III Mountain Pine Beetle, and the 1,775. These funds coming from the assigned election reserve in the amount of $284.11. And the remaining supplement requests were coming from the unassigned fund balance in the fund that, that is, is referred to.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to supplement these budgets as per, as per what KJ has just read.
Karen has the, the outline that include, in the minutes, it will include the budget and the amounts of each individual fund, so.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, KJ.
And that's it for supplements for 2012.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10. Items from the Emergency Services Users Board, A, B, C, and D.
Good morning. We've been talking about the tower expansion simulcast project for about a year now. And we are ready to move forward with construction. The group of motions that you have in front of you is, is just that. It is starting construction on the west side, which is item D, and purchasing the equipment from Motorola. Chief Maltevern sends his regrets. He's at a funeral this morning, but Sheriff Tom is here on his behalf if we have questions.
Just, just so I'm clear, the motions that you have on this paper, say A, B, and C, does that relate to items A, B, and C on the agenda?
They do. Motion one is the, the resolution is item A that was attached here. B was the lease purchase, et cetera.
And then item D will have a separate...
Item D will have a separate motion, yes.
So do we have any discussion, questions relative to items A, B, or C? And I think we need one motion for each of them.
That is correct, yes.
Separate motions. So the first, first one under consideration would be to approve the resolution relating to the lease purchase agreement and the chairman's signature there, too. So we'll discuss that. Was that a motion? No. I, I wanted to clarify what, what we were discussing.
Just for the board's information, we've had, because this is a, a long-term lease purchase agreement, we've had the state's attorney's office working with Betsy Abbey to, to originate the motions that we need to make sure it doesn't conflict with our other bonding documents. And in, and in fact, it, it is inducing a debt to, to Pennington County. And so that's all, that's all been reviewed by, by both those offices.
I have one question. I don't know much about this, but I see there's a whole bunch of equipment here, page after page after page. And you're going to be getting that shortly, I suspect, or...
Over the next year, yes.
And is that, then we're going to have to pay to move it all over to the other building in another year?
No, this equipment is all going to the three tower sites.
Okay, so it's, none of it's going to be over here?
None.
Okay, so we, we didn't lose anything there?
Nope.
Any other questions? Comments? Do we have a motion? And if we do, it would be on motion number one.
Leon, the resolution related to the lease purchase agreement, that's with Motorola and that's for this equipment?
That is correct.
And the total amount of that lease purchase is what?
$1,266,037.
And you've given us an outline of how that's going to be paid for?
That is correct. The attachment D there is the five-year payment plan by entity. It actually has the, the actual lease agreement has the, the plan that's been laid out for annual payments. And then that attachment has the plan laid out by who will be paying. And it's split between the city of Rapid City, the sheriff's office, the city of Box Elder, and 911.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the lease purchase with Motorola and authorize the chairperson's signature.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone have any questions or comments? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Motion two, or item two, which would be item B. Would you care to comment on that, or do you have anything further?
This is simply the financial agreement with Motorola for that equipment.
So how is this different than the lease purchase?
This, the, the first item was the resolution, which the bond attorney says that we have to have separate from the lease purchase. which the bond attorney says that we have to have separate from the lease purchase. This item is the lease purchase, which is the financial agreement.
They didn't do the resolution.
Okay, I think I.
Yeah, I think the motion was for the lease purchase.
I stated the lease purchase rather than the resolution.
There, yeah, there are two independent ones. Thank you.
Pardon? So why do we have to do the resolution?
It's just like with any other bonding, it's a debt. It's very, it's exact, almost exactly the same resolution pattern and approval pattern that we have for bonds.
Okay, I got two documents here. One of them is lease purchase agreement between Motorola and Pennington County. And then I've got another one that says communication system agreement.
That's correct. The communication system agreement is actually the project agreement. It's how Motorola will execute the project, whereas the lease purchase is simply that financial agreement. They're two separate things. And the attorneys tell us that we do need to do them independent of each other.
So do we have a copy of this resolution?
Yeah. First one.
Okay. Clear as mud.
Yes.
We cut down a lot of trees giving it to us.
We did, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the one that Don didn't.
Second.
So you're referring to motion?
The resolution.
A. The resolution.
You confused, too?
Wait a minute. Just to clarify.
So when I made the motion, I made the motion for the lease purchase, which is actually B. Got ahead of you, Chairman, I'm sorry. But what Ron's doing is backing up and correcting what I didn't, I didn't do, which is the resolution.
Do all the members of the board agree to that scramble? Okay, so as long as the secretary is clear on it, we are now dealing with a motion. Did it get a second?
Yes.
And a second related to item A on the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now work to item C.
Which again is the communication systems agreement, and that is the project agreement with Motorola. That's how they will actually execute the plan to put the equipment, to manufacture the equipment and put it on the three towers.
So I would move to approve the communication system agreement with Motorola Solutions and authorize the chairman's signature there too.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is item D.
Item D is the contract award from the bid to construct the west side tower. And we opened the bids on November 26th, and the low bidder was RCS Construction for $251,003.
So how many bids did you get?
We received four bids.
That's in there later on.
Oh, I'm looking it, sorry.
Just so we're clear, then you, if the board approves it, we need a motion to award the contract to RCS.
Correct.
That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Karen, do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Not those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is item 11A. An abatement application.
So, Mr. Chair, what you need is a motion to approve the abatement.
Soon as we get the details and the advice of our Director of Equalization.
My advice is that you approve the abatements. There's three of them. One is Isman Homes or Luthy. It's a 1979 mobile home. It was moved to Custer sometime prior to April of 2011. Custer County provided us proof that the taxes were paid there. That needs to be abated. The Johnson abatement is another mobile home. It's a 1998. It was assessed in 2010, 2011, and 2012. However, we found out that the dealer actually owned the home on the assessment date for the 2011 assessment, and it shouldn't have been on the 2011 assessment. Should be abated. The Smith abatement is another mobile home. It's an older 1957 mobile home. Took us a while to figure that one out. She called and told us that she was dismantling it and taking it to the dump. We went out to verify that, found what we thought was that mobile home on a neighbor's property or on at least another property. We kept it on the tax roll, found out, no, that was another old mobile home that was not hers. Hers actually did go to the dump, so it needs to be taken off the tax roll.
Do each of these abatements need individual motions?
It would seem like it would be quicker to do all three, unless the commission has a problem with one of them.
I may.
Yeah, and then you can deal with that separately, yeah.
What's the issue, the commission?
I want to do it separately.
Okay. That's what we'll do.
Mr. Chair.
First one is for $792.30, is am I correct?
I don't have the tax amount, I have a value. Give me a name on it.
Isman.
Okay.
Sure is it? I don't know.
My question is this, that if it got moved, Custer, did we get a moving permit? Did they get a moving permit?
Isman.
Isn't that, I keep track of them?
It is, but Isman Mobile Homes is a mobile home dealer. The mobile home dealers have a standing moving permit. Sometimes, especially with respect to this company, they don't tell us when they move it. They don't actually have to come to the treasurer's office and get a moving permit. They have a standing one as a dealer.
Mr. Chair. Shannon, are these, on this Isman and on Johnson, those are 2011 taxes due in 2012?
That's correct.
And so I see that wasn't, wasn't removed until April of 2011? So do we get a partial year on those?
They paid the entire tax bill in Custer County. So I suppose we could, we could argue for a partial, but Custer County provided proof that they paid an entire year there.
How about on the other one where?
The Johnson one, the dealer moved the home to their lot, and the statute says that if a mobile home is on a dealer's lot for the assessment date, it's not to be taxed. So it could, in effect, be there for one day, and it would be off the tax roll.
Okay, but, and so they had it for the entire year, 2011?
No, I'm not sure exactly how long they had it. They had it more than one day, but they had it over that time period.
Because again, if they took it to their lot in July of 2011, would we not get the assessment? Wouldn't the people have to pay the tax for the first half of the year?
The statute says that if a mobile home is on a dealer's lot for the assessment date, it's not taxed. We could, we could add that to the tax roll as omitted property for a partial year. But we have the other statute that says that if it's on a dealer's lot for the assessment date, it's not taxed.
And what is the assessment date?
November 1st.
So November 1st, 2011 sets the taxes for 2011?
No, November 1st of 2010.
Okay. But I thought they didn't get it until 2011, so they could, they surely didn't have it in assessment data November 2010.
They did, for a certain period of time there. I don't know how long they had it. But the 11, the 2011 assessment is based on the assessment date of November 1st, 2010. And we found out here recently that what happened was is somebody owned this home, and it's on the tax roll. They traded it in or sold it or did whatever. The dealer took ownership of it or possession of it, had it for however long, and then somebody else bought it and it moved.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
So you want to do these individually?
I just wanted to talk about that one.
Make the motion to approve them all.
Do we have a motion?
That's my motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the three abatements for Isman Homes, Roger and Sylvia Johnson, and Teresa Smith. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, Teresa Meyer with the Penn County 4-H program update.
Lindell, I think it's Tiffany.
Sorry, I'd like to change that to Tiffany Meyer.
Sorry about that.
All right, how are you guys today? I'm just here to kind of present just kind of my year in review from January of 2012 till now. Just kind of out of a courtesy, just to let you guys know what's going on with the Pennington County 4-H program, so. We have in the past year increased our enrollments. I do have numbers later on, another slide for all of this. Increased enrollment, increased our projects taken to fair, and also the quality of the projects taken to fair. We've had a lot of purples. Increased awareness of 4-H overall. That was a big thing of going to different things. People are like, I remember being in 4-H, I didn't think it was still around. So getting out there, getting our name back out there has been a big, big deal for us. We have five after-school programs that either have a 4-H component to it or is managed directly by one of us in the office, which is, we have one at North Rapid Middle School that we do STEM activities with, robotics. We're gonna be getting into planets, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Planets and also rocketry and different things like that. And then we have another one also at Douglas Middle School and some out on the base. Increase in participation from leaders and members. A lot of my members and leaders have really stepped up since I'm only one person. They really have had to take on a few extra little things for me, and they've been doing great. And they've actually really enjoyed it, being able to get more involved. So the workshops, because of being on maternity leave, I haven't, wasn't able to do a lot for a few months there. But these are what we have had so far, is we've done building a rocket, bread baking, a small animal showmanship workshop, which we did cats, rabbits, and poultry. A cupcake decorating that we had Freshberry, one of their decorators, come down and actually give it. The kids loved it. We had 18 kids at that one, so. Bread baking, question, answer, what that was, was right before Western Junior, we had a lot of kids that were wondering about the bread baking contest itself. And so we had somebody from Belle Fouch came down and did that workshop for us. Self-defense, my rodeo director for the wall rodeo is also a self-defense instructor. So he came back and gave a couple hours of self-defense for the youth. And then also youth in action, question, answer. It was an all-day event with all, for anybody that had any questions about our youth in action events. And I will get into that in a couple more slides. So these are just a few of the pictures. Top one is when we actually shot off the rockets over there by the soccer fields, by the Central States Fairgrounds. And then this is Sean McKay. He's my wall rodeo director, but also our self-defense person. And then down at the bottom, this is part of it. We were actually bathing a chicken, and we did not drown the chicken. But the kids got a pretty good kick out of it. They actually did not realize you had to bathe your chickens before fairs. So they actually, they learned a lot that day, so, yes.
Would you let me know the next time you have a rocket building class workshop?
Yes, I will. We're actually gonna, that one, I think, will be an annual one because the kids have loved it every year, so.
He's not allowed to play with explosives.
So these are the ones that we have coming up in 2013. As of right now, we were always putting more on because some leaders are actually gonna be stepping up and wanting to do some on their own, too. But these are the ones that I will mainly be doing. Bread baking in January. The field trip with the comm squadron up at the base. We're actually gonna be collaborating together because a lot of them, I have the commander as my mentor for my North Rapid Middle School after-school program. And so he wants to get his squadron together with some of his guys, and then our tech wizard programs together, and then go out and do a field trip. So we're collaborating with that one. Horse safety judging in April. Our possible racing pigeon carrying training. We actually have some kids that are interested in that, and we have a guy that wants to get a club going for there. In February, we're looking at doing a leather training, or leather with tandy leather. I have a leader coming in doing, it's called a mesh wreath. I guess it's the whole new thing now is doing mesh wreaths or mesh decorating things with mesh, I guess. And so there, she wants to do a big wreath workshop for that. And then also, this is a new one that I haven't got to do in a couple of years. But had a lot of, we're gonna do a livestock judging school in May. We're actually gonna pull people from the state to come down and help the kids talk about how to properly judge each animal species and also how to get proper reasons and then have a livestock judging at the end of it. So have leaders bring in animals for me. So these are my day camps. Last year, we had, it was called, since I was going on maternity leave, I was able to get two in, like I would like to. So we just did the one, it was called the Noah's Ark Day Camp. It's, usually my day camps are six to 10-year-olds, but I do take them younger and older. If they have an interest, I don't care if they want to come. But it's usually the target area I like to just, for our day camps, just because the older kids can go to 4-H camp and to some of the other events that these younger ones cannot go to. They got to learn about different types of animals. It's not just about cows and sows. We actually did dogs and bats. We actually had the military dogs come down, and luckily I was pregnant because they wanted to let my arm get in one of those things. And so I sent one of my 4-Hers up there. Chickens, we had Crazy Critters Pet Shop, who is actually a past 4-H member. They came in with snakes, flying squirrels, I mean, you name it, they came in with it. It was pretty cool. Ducks, goats, horses, sheep, and rabbits. The junior leaders are actually ones that put at least one day camp on a year. So they're the ones that organize it. Maintenance, they get all the registrations in. They're the group leaders. They take the active role in teaching the youth, too. If there's something that we can't teach, then we bring somebody in. Like we brought Joel Tigger in to talk about bats, because I don't know anything about bats. And so it was actually kind of interesting to listen to him. That's why they can achieve leadership. They get event organization skills underneath them and also their community service. It's open to all youth in the county. That's why hopefully we can, and we get lots, we don't really get that many 4-Hers in it because we're trying to recruit 4-Hers. So this is kind of a way to do that. They see kind of the fun, different things we can do. And like I said, it was my only one for the year, so. So these are just a few pictures of it. That was a military guy getting attacked by his dog. So these are the camps that I have going on for 2013. As usual, we have Camp Bob Marshall every year in June. We have a teen camp and also the littler kids camp, we call it. But both of them are gonna be based off of survival skills. So they're gonna learn about everything like how to do a fire, how to set up a tent properly. You know, we just lost skills that kids have kind of lost nowadays just because it's easier to go to a motel or to bring an RV or something like that. I mean, if, and we're hoping, because I know that one youth that was lost during hunting season. season, we're actually talking about maybe if we can come in and, and do a little guest speaker of like, why it's good to know something if you're out walking even. So that's kind of our plan, too. Day camps, I'm kind of part of a coalition that's, um, about getting healthy living and their biggest part is about bicycles. And so they're looking for, um, we need to get the word out more about bicycle safety around Rapid City because more people are doing it, especially they need to be on the roads, and so it's kind of to help them out and then also have kind of a little bicycle rodeo, since bicycle is also one of our project areas and I do have many youth in it. They'll learn basic maintenance. I'm hoping to partner up with like Crazy Jeffs, um, two-wheeler dealers, things, people like that to come in and help, and also recruiting the city police to kind of get demonstrations on their bikes, too. My next one is, since the littler kids can't really go to Camp Bob Marshall, is to have kind of a mini survival day camp where they'll be learning those same skills that they'll be getting. Just, and I'm hoping to partner up with, um, Boy Scouts with that one, too. And those two will both be in July, just because of, June is usually horse show, camps, and different things that the youth have going on, so. Every year, we have a carnival. This year, it's in Ju, in January. The little ticket prices that we actually do only pays for supplies, we really, they don't make, the leaders do not make any money off of it, it's just to help pay for a few things. We sell tickets for twenty-five cents or five for a dollar. Last year, the theme was going to the movies, we actually have our theme this year, it's Getting Wild with Four H, and it's going to be all based off of wildlife and things like that, so the kids can have fun with that. They give out, each club participates in it, so we have a countywide participation, and they each come up with a game and they have to give out a little prize at the end, so. As I was talking about, youth in action events, these are special events that if they purple at, in their events, they can, and they're a certain age and depending on the division, or on the area, they can go to state with it. So the four divisions that we have are the four areas, Family, Consumer Science, and Special Foods, which is a very in-depth, um, they have to know nutrition, they have to know my plate, they have to, depending on their age, make a certain, like beginners will do like a smoothie, and then every year on top, you know, when they move up to juniors, they have to do, um, like one meal or one, one part of a meal, and as a seniors, they have to do a full meal. And then they also have to do a placemat or a placing of it, so they have to have a theme of what they're going to do and their food has to base off of that. So there's a lot to it, and the kids actually, we're getting more and more kids in it and they're learning more and more about their proper nutrition, so it's been great. Fashion View is teaching kids all about being good consumers, um, how to, it's being, judging the kids with the clothing on them, so it's about teaching them how to dress properly, dress professionally. Also being able to utilize thrift store areas that you can actually still get decent clothes at a thrift store for a cheaper price, so they learn a lot doing that different project. Public speaking, of course, is speeches, demonstrations, illustrated talks on any of their projects they have. And then we do, um, do judging, which is, there's different areas, there's a horticulture judging, which is usually in the parts of the plants, um, identify these different types of vegetables or fruits, different things like that. It kind of, it changes every year. Family, Consumer Science, they have to judge, it's kind of like livestock judging, but they judge photography, Consumer Science areas, um, child development, they're given different situations, they're given four toys and they have to come up with, and they have a scenario where it's like you are trying to play with your two-year-old brother, which toy would you give, which would be safest based off of this criteria, and they go through and they judge off of that, so. We've had a lot of kids go back to state fair for that and do really good in it, so. Last year, we had five counties represented, we're actually one of the bigger ones to come out, um, that they actually come to my youth in action before they go to theirs, because we're very much more organized than a lot of them, and they really enjoy coming into Rapid City to get some of their shopping done, too, at the same time. State fair, I had some amazing kids do well at state fair this year. Michaela Raymond, she got grand and junior hunter over, over fences. She is on the bottom left. Cody Click, who's on the top, she got reserve champion in trail, and then Lauren Hay got reserve champion as senior over fences, so. I had about six kids go to, to Huron in July with it, and they all did very well, so. Um, also, and like I said, these are all their, um, results. Sarah Voss, she had a Blue Ribbon Public Presentation. She also took seventh place overall in the horse judging individuals. Casey took, um, eleventh overall. Courtney took seventeenth, and Stephanie took twenty-eighth. This was at about fifty kids, so they were doing pretty good. Horse judging overall team was four, was fourth. And even though some are juniors, they all placed, they all, since we had a mixture of juniors and seniors, they had to all do seniors, so they were judged a little bit harder, so I think that's pretty good for my juniors to be able to do so well. My Pennington County ambassadors, Kayla McCarthy, she, she won the ambassador contest for the Pennington County Wall, so she represented Pennington County. I was from Pennington County, so it's a pretty big deal because any youth can get in, can go to the wall rodeo and participate in the ambassador contest. So she, she had to earn it through horsemanship, impromptu speech, rodeo knowledge and horsemanship knowledge, and then she took fourth overall in her, um, rodeo, at the state rodeo. Siglen Wheeler, he's my Pennington County four H youth ambassador. He's had to earn that title through four H work, community service, leadership, citizenship, club work, and an interview at the state level. He'll have that for three years, so he will be promoting and, um, doing things around Pennington County, on the rest, Western District and also statewide, too, so. These are those numbers I was talking about. We've gone up a little bit for, we've got, last year was four hundred and sixteen, I already know that my numbers are higher now, just because we've had more kids entering into shooting sports. And we've actually had more cloverbuds come in to play, too, this year, so. Exhibitors last year at fair was a hundred and seventy-nine. Our number of clubs that we have is twenty-six, and we're hoping to add one more this year. Clubs that exhibited were seventeen last year, just because we have special interest clubs that don't do the main fair parts. They actually, like, our shooting sports clubs only run January to April, and then they do their state qualifying at the end of April and they're done after that. So the same thing with my Tech Wizard clubs, they only run during school time, kind of deal, so. These are my traditional clubs that, that come in and do the, um, do the four H fair, so. I didn't have a number with my horse, but usually, and we had two shows this year, usually every kid takes about five classes, and I usually have about thirty to forty for, um, horse use, so if you want to do the math, you can kind of make an estimate on top of what it was without the horse, so. The twenty-two, forty-nine was how many we had pre-registered for four H fair was just indoor exhibits, so we had quite a few this year. And then they can sign up for as many as they want, we tell them to sign up because you can't re-sign up that day, so that's why our number's usually high, but we're still pretty high for who, what they brought in anyway, so. So it was, um, one thousand one hundred and thirty-three. So like I say, our purples were up, we had five hundred and thirty, which we took majority of those to state fair, um, for static exhibit judging, and then we had forty, four hundred and forty-one blues, a hundred and thirty-nine reds, and thirty-five whites. Our clover number, cloverbud numbers are up, and they're going to be still continuing this year. That's just who exhibited, we actually have about, um, oh, about forty or so, but just because of not realizing it, they kind of get lost sometimes, so I'm really making that my project this year to make sure my cloverbuds really get included in the four H project. And my cloverbud ages are five of the seven-year-olds, so the ones are, are just learning it, so. And there, the numbers that, the, the number of projects they brought in were sixty-two, so. We did pig wrestling for promotion for four H. I do not recommend doing that right after you come out of maternity leave. The second group, oops, what did I do? Uh-oh. The second group did really well, they actually went to the finals, um, and they got second place, they, they put the pig in, I think, at thirty-two seconds. Winning team was twenty-something, so. So this was their finals night that they did it on, so. Very muddy, very sloppy, but it was a ton of fun, the kids had a blast. So this is just a few pictures of Achievement Day. We have a style show on Saturday, and our dress review judging is also on Saturday morning, so this is where it's open to the public. Four H judging the Thursday before. Rabbit and Cats is done the Tuesday now, just because of conflicts with, um, state dog, and I had kids doing both, so I wanted to make sure all my kids could participate in everything that they're in. And then we have poultry judging, or poultry showing on that Sunday, and it's, these are the first Sunday of state fair for them, so it's really busy in the barn anyways, but the kids love it, so. Promotional things that we've done this year, I've had two open houses, one in January and one in October. We did a, we went to Scare on the Square, where we handed out about a hundred treat, trick-or-treat bags that have four H information in it. They had about, I think they said like eight thousand people come around, so it was great that we had tons of people to talk to. We went and did on Main Street Square Earth Day, where we talked about using, um, items in your home that you can reuse and what you can do with them. I've had quite a few clubs, since Tractor Supply is a big supporter of us, come during their Clover Days and, and help out, um, bag things, promote four H in that way. I went up to Hill City and with, they had a synthetic drug seminar, and we were trying to, um, show kids that there are other things around for them to do, so four H was part of that. Every year, I take a big, um, I'm very involved in Black Hill Stock Show, so we do, it's called Youth Pig Stock. We have two days at the Civic Center where we invite all of the schools in a hundred-mile radius, so the third and fourth graders, to come in and learn about Ag, and we collaborate with Ag in the classroom with that. Western Junior Livestock and Family Consumer Science Shows, obviously, because we're right there on the fairgrounds, and we take a very active role for Pennington County in that. We also have a food booth there to, um, to help out. Black Hill Stock Show Youth Day, I spearheaded that one again this year, so that's going, we got it back on the first weekend, and, um, we've had quite a few people come in and already are signing up for it, and the registration just went out two days ago, so. We had a booth at the, it's called Dakota Fest, it was a small acreage seminar that's the regional center. Mindy Hubert, the small acreage specialist, put on, so we had a booth there to promote four H for everybody, and then also our clubs are just doing community service and promotion. Right now, I have a club that's helping out the Boy Scouts with the blue bags, so they're going around with them, too. And so that's the, that's the latest one I've had for community service. Other ones do other things randomly around, um, Wall and Hill City area, they have a club up there, and everybody's trying to stay very active. As I was talking about our after-school programs, I have North Tech Wizard, it's the third school season that I'm there. It actually started as a grant, a national grant with OJJDPC and National Four H. We do collaborate with Starbase and we still do collaborate with them. Our main focus is STEM curriculum and careers, we're always talking about different careers the youth can be doing, and that there's actually a lot in science they can be doing, and they can do it. They're actually pretty amazed when they actually can do the robots or do a sinus project or something like that. So the areas that we focus on are Lego Meister Robots, Celestia, Nano Technology, Cubify, and then Aerospace and Rocketry is what we're doing this year. Douglas, um, Tech Wizards, it's their second school season, they started with a military grant, same grant, but it was just a branch off from it. They still currently have the grant, I don't, so we're, I'm doing it on my own because there were so many kids that were very interested and they wanted to keep going with it. It's a mentor program that has teachers helping as mentors, mine has military personnel that come down for it. They partner also with Starbase, and their focus is also on the same STEM activities. Our military personnel, our military, um, person in the office, Rebecca Pulsho, she's still up there at the youth center. We started in two thousand and eleven with me, that was when we started it, and then I took over on this position. It's a weekly after-school program in the open rec, which is the nine to twelve-year-olds, and during the summertime, she does do the, and she is trying to get over there to the school age side, but they're the five to eight-year-olds, and then she also does the teen center weekly, too. There's three clubs that are active within the, each section's got a four H club that's active in that section, so. They're making bubbles there if you guys want to know. I'm also right now doing, I just finished my second group with them, it's the Juvenile Service Center. I take four of the youth in there and we do robotics, and it's talking about how to take things step by step. I give them a situation, give them a mission, they have to figure out how to do the mission. It's all about problem solving, it's frustrating, they understand that, and they get over kind of those blocks and stuff, so they've been doing really great, so I mean, they have to, they have to have good behavior anyways to be in there, but, I mean, a lot of them are like, I don't know if I can do this, and by the end of it, we just had it last week where we went there for their ceremony deal and the kids got to show off what they, what they've done, and, I mean, everybody thought it was so cool and they thought that was pretty cool, everybody, that they could actually do that, so. It's been a huge hit so far, so. The next time I will go is in January, I go every other month, just because some month in four H, I don't want to have to cancel on them all the time because there's something going on that Thursday or I have conferences or something. So every other month or the months that I really don't have a lot, for as far as the state want me to do something, and I don't have to cancel on them, because, you know, they already, there's some, some are in there for that reason because they've been disappointed before, and I don't want to disappoint them, so. So it's been working out really good so far, so I'm pretty excited to go back in January to get a new set of four. I'll also be starting tomorrow, cloverbud monthly meeting, this is open to all my cloverbuds that are even in their traditional clubs and also ones that are just wanting just to do the cloverbud part. It's going to be the first Wednesday of every month, we're going to be starting to teach them about parliamentary procedures, so if they go back to a club, they're not lost when they're trying to do a meeting, they actually have a kind of a small understanding of it. We'll be completing the per-four H project or crafted each time, and we'll be doing at least one community service project, so either making cards for the soldiers or doing a food drive or something like that. These are my five to seven-year-olds, so we'll see how, how it goes. Uh, my goals for two thousand and thirteen is to continue developing a strong relationship with Central States Fair, I think we are very much on that road of, me and Pam and, and Ron have been doing great, trying to think of things for especially Central States Fair with my four H group, I'm hoping to bring back my livestock show, just because I actually have more youth in livestock and a lot of them already do show at Central States Fair, so it helps them only having to come once and prepare their animals once, maintain open contact with you guys, and also increase my membership between two and three percent, which is usually about twenty to thirty members a year. And then just hopefully I can get into more promotion and programming in Wall and Hill City, so. I have one of my leaders that works for the, um, the chamber up there in Hill City, and so she's going to be starting to tell me about different events up there, so I can start heading up there. And four H appreciates your support. Is there any questions, or?
Thank you, that was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like you're busy.
I am. And I'll be even busier, because I know my husband will deploy in in January, so my schedule will just be even more fun.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Next item is items from Weed and Pest, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Weed and Pest Tracker, I just want to give you enough, quick update on how the, uh, survey crew and the cutting crews are doing, and, uh, announce a generous donation that was made to the county on, for our pine beetle program. The survey crews got a little over twelve thousand trees surveyed, identified for, uh, for cutting junk. We've got seventeen contract cutters, under contract, individual contract cutters, that are doing an excellent job for us. They're experienced, certified, uh, some with vest cutters around, been getting a lot of comments from, uh, the general public on what a great job they're doing out there. We went out and inspected a couple of the completed projects last week with forest service, and they were very pleased on, on what they were doing out there on the forest as well, so. We're tracking right along. And then, uh, last week, uh, Nyman Timber Industry, uh, donated fifty thousand dollars to Pennington County for, uh, for our efforts. They did the same for, uh, Crook and Weston and Lawrence County, so they're, they're obviously very invested in this, uh, in this fight, uh, it's their livelihood. I think if the timber, if Nyman shuts down, I think it directly affects something like seven hundred jobs directly. Fifteen hundred, so double that, so obviously they're very concerned about this, so. Uh, that money will go directly on the ground, it'll, uh, pay for, uh, trees to be cut by our cutters, so. Just wanted to give that update to you guys.
Where are your projects at?
Most of them are in around the Hill City area, we got some up by the Deerfield area, uh, then some along the three eighty-five corridor, kind of in the heavy infested areas, and then we got, uh, we'll be doing some road right-of-ways, like on, uh, Old Hill City Road, uh, Cali Met Road, uh, Idolwise Silver City Road, kind of those, uh, emergency escape routes that are kind of one-way access, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I really appreciated that Nyman Lumber donated that fifty thousand to us, we didn't anticipate that, so when Scott and I were in a mountain pine beetle meeting, it was a really, um, nice surprise. But I, I do think that it would be appropriate if we sent a thank you to the company, because that money, um, I, it just lets us do more, and, um, that, that's very much appreciated. So, uh, I, I'd like to make, um, a motion that we send on behalf of the commission, a thank you letter to them for that money.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. I would comment that I think that should go under your signature since you're the person representing the board in this effort. Is that acceptable as a commission?
You bet.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next item, item 14, it's an item from the chair, and the question is, do we or do we not wish to submit a commission response to the Spring Creek Watershed Implementation Project Letters to the Editor? And referencing the November 21st edition of the Hill City Prevailers, there were three letters there, and they represent the thoughts of three citizens relative to the project, and that's an acceptable kind of thing in public discourse, and so the question is, does the commission wish to have an official response, or not necessarily a response or rebuttal, but informational piece in the Hill City paper? We have a draft of, one that's prepared, and so if you do want the commission represented by that, we'll make a motion to do so, and if not, if we have no motion, there'll be no response. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to authorize the chair's signature on the letter presented, the letter to the editor in the papers.
Is that on behalf of the commission?
Yes.
Or, excuse me?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item, 1032, planning and zoning, Board of Adjustment, we need a motion. While we're waiting for a motion, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of former State Senator JP Dunneffin, and she's also Chair of the Pennington County Housing Authority, am I correct?
Yes.
Welcome.
I'd make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, you didn't ask for discussion from the audience on the previous motion.
I will not acknowledge your point of order because I didn't call for any and I do not, am not required to do so. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Do you want to take just 10 minutes while we go get planning and zoning? We don't have anybody here.
Let's take ten. Why not? It's 10:30.
Make a motion to take a 10-minute break.
We have a motion for a 10-minute break? Is that a substitute motion?
Yeah, it'll be a substitute motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mission meeting back to order, and the next motion we need is to go into a Board of Adjustment. Do we have such a motion?
I move to go into Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to convene the Board of Adjustment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Morning, Dan Genison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, 12-10 for Stuart Adrian to reduce the setback requirements from the section line right away in the east property line from 25 feet to five feet in a general ag zoning district in order to construct a detached garage. It's located at 13790 Highway 40, approximately three miles east of Hayward on, along Highway 40, and approximately a quarter mile north of the Pennington County-Custer County Line, and currently it is part of a 463-acre parcel. Back in 2001, he did get a variance for the existing house to be located 10 feet from that same property line, that was approved, and the house has been built, it's not fully constructed yet, it's there and built 10 feet from that same property line. He also obtained a lot size variance for this portion of the property along the east side of the Highway 40, and that portion of the property is 2.75 acres. The parcel is approximately 135 feet wide at the widest point and approximately 1,150 feet long. The home was located in the widest part of the property, and again, at 10 feet from that same property line that he's requesting now. The parcel was created back in 1986 when they created or redid Highway 40, and this portion was separated from the main ranch land, and that is why it's currently a 2.75 If I can get this to work. He does, and currently it is part of the same parcel along the west side of Highway 40, but as you can see, the cabin is located along that very east property line, and he wants to build the cabin. Right in this location, right in here, in five feet from this property line, there is a question as to whether it is more than 58 feet from the section line, which is this line right here. This is a driveway, but it is also a public rightaway because there's a section line, but it provides access to just three parcels here, here, and here. I don't believe there's a residence built on any of those, or is there one parcel? One parcel has a residence? It is of very flat terrain, it does appear he could build the garage, meeting the required setback, and I can show you pictures of the area. This is the existing cabin, looking along Highway 40, to the left is where he wants to build the garage. This is looking to the south, Highway 40 is right here, the section line right away is in here, this is the property line he wants to build five feet from, but there is, certainly appears to be enough area in this area where he can meet the 25-foot setback from Highway 40 in from the east property line.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm pretty familiar with that area, and I do not see a problem with site, with issues that could be a problem to anyone, so I would make the motion that we allow the variance.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Just have a question. Why, why are we doing this if there is room to build this garage and meet the setback Anybody, can anybody answer that? I mean, why do we need this variance?
Morning. Stuart Adrian, I'm both the owner and the applicant. It is true that I could meet the 25-foot setback, and that would result in the garage being almost in the middle of the lot, which is a real poor location. When you're out on site looking at it from where you drive in, I mean, you can see the logical place is to put it against that back fence where the house is located. If I do observe a 25-foot setback from the left of the screen there, and if I build a 32-foot deep garage, if I put a 20-foot approach in front of that where normally you'd park, that only leaves a little more than 55 feet for vehicles to come in, and I think for cars that might be okay, but I think for bigger equipment, and I'm thinking like of emergency vehicles, there just isn't enough room for vehicles to come in. If I can get that variance and sit back, I almost double the length, I think a fire truck could get in there a lot easier, turn around, I mean, it keeps it a lot more open, you can see what you've got there. But with, if I observe the existing setbacks with that 50-foot, if the Hayward pumper comes some night, as soon as it pulls in the driveway, there's an immediate bottleneck, I mean, nobody else will be able to get in behind it, so I mean, I see that as an issue down, I mean, a possible issue that we could alleviate by getting the variance.
So what's the distance from the, would be the east side of that building to the east lot line?
The east side of the building?
That you're proposing to put in.
The proposed garage?
Mm-hmm.
If it's built with a variance or without?
Well, the way you've got it set right now, requesting the 5-foot setback. I mean, I'm looking at this little diagram you got right here, it looks like there's a lot of room between the east side.
I need to move it this way.
Or, I'm sorry, the west side, the west side, from the west side to the, that.
Well, it is, the lot is 135-foot at its widest, and where the garage is sighted to be, that starts to narrow there, and I don't have the exact measurement there, but if you, if we just figure it out, if I, with the, the corner of the building now is about seven or eight foot from the fence.
Sure, so it looks like you'd have about 100 foot there.
I don't think it would be quite that much. Also, it's a 34-foot wide garage, so 34, 44, I'm thinking it'd be less, I'm thinking like 80 foot. But I think the advantage of keeping it back against the fence is then I've got all that room between the garage and where you drive in, I mean, there's just, it's just an open area then where, you know, trucks could come in and turn around and you've got a lot more staging area there. If it's sitting, if it's sighted in the middle of the lot, then you just, you reduce all of that by a considerable amount.
Any other questions or comments, sir?
Marvin Bishop, I'm acting as agent for an adjacent landowner, Paul in Manor Wright. They own the land immediately to the right, and some of you were here four years ago when we built the section line road up through there, I did the surveying while we studied that. They have no objection from a visibility aspect for this variance, none at all. Their only concern that they asked me to express was it was setback far enough from the section line road for a safety aspect. I did my best to assure them that you would not be doing your job if you didn't take that into consideration, and I felt that it was sufficiently setback. From the section line right away, it is much more than five feet, I think it's, I have not measured it, but I think it's in the neighborhood of 30 to 50 feet from the section line right away. And on the west side is Highway 40, a heavier traveled road, higher speeds, further setback from that is probably more important than being setback from the road on the section line right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
I guess my only comment is, you know, when we've had other people coming in for variance, usually it's because of some condition on the property that prohibits them from building if we don't allow them the setback, that or else they just went ahead and did it and come in and ask for forgiveness. So he's got one plus, at least he only did the dirt work, he didn't build the building, but normally that's what we do, isn't it, Dan? It's a situation where the lot is unbuildable or there's some terrain that makes it the only place to put it in, and that just doesn't seem to be the case in this particular situation. Just a comment, I guess.
Okay, any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
We have a roll call vote.
No. This is not the time for discussion, but I have the same problem that Don has with it.
No.
Troutman?
Hi.
Peterson?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Doesn't matter how you vote.
Three and two.
Yep.
Motion to come out of Board of Adjustment?
He's gone, huh? I'd like to give notice to possibly reconsider that item during this, during the meeting. I gotta think about that a little bit while it's, maybe better catching.
He's still out there.
I just don't, I don't know why he wants to do it there.
Well, it doesn't matter if you can convince Don or I.
I know it, but it has to be you.
Okay.
Should we come out of Board of Adjustment?
It won't work anyway.
Well, you'll need to stay in Board of Adjustment to reconsider this item.
I'll draw my motion.
What motion?
I move to go out of Board of Adjustment.
Did you have a second?
Yes, I did.
And I won't agree to it.
So where does that leave us?
I don't know.
The first legal attorney?
The, the motion has already been withdrawn, the second is automatically withdrawn.
No, it's not.
You can't, okay.
If we have a motion and a second, and the second refuses to withdraw, then we can still vote on the motion and vote it down.
But in this case, the motion was made and seconded, and it's on the floor now, and withdrawing the motion without the second withdrawing it doesn't mean anything, it's still on the floor.
So if we vote on it, on that, on those terms, it's kind of like having one foot on each side of the bar of our fence.
Yeah, something like that.
It's a scratchy situation.
I'm not sure.
Jay, do you want to weigh in on this?
And you're not in for it, are you out in for it?
No, they're still in Board of Adjustment.
Trying to get either in or out.
Mr. Chair.
Come out of Board of Adjustment.
We had a notice intent to reconsider prior to that.
That's right, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify something here, if I could clarify something, it doesn't make any difference how I switch my vote one way or the other, because it's already failed, unless we can get Don or Ron to change the vote, it's of no consequence.
Right.
It has to be a four to one.
Mr. Chair, let's vote on the motion, it's on the floor.
Okay.
And move forward.
We need clarification as to whether or not the withdrawal of the motion itself can be enforced because the second declines to withdraw.
Was the motion maker part of the prevailing party of the judicial?
No.
No.
But that doesn't matter.
All this has to do is whether or not we're going to adjourn from Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, that's.
I'm going to make the motion to reconsider.
I will withdraw my second because I, even if we vote on this, I suspect someone could turn around and make a motion to go back into the Board of Adjustment.
Unless the motion fails.
I don't care.
I normally refrain from a lot of the discussion relative to an issue, but in this case of this variance, I feel there's one element that has not been touched in the discussion, and if there is reconsideration, at least we'd have an opportunity to express that and then vote again.
The reason I asked to go ahead and vote on the motion, because I think the motion's going to fail, I don't think we're going to go out of Board of Adjustment, so.
But I took it that the second withdrew.
Did you take the withdrawal?
Yeah, let's get on with the program.
Okay.
So we're still in the Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still in discussion with the Okay, so we're still in discussion with the, with the original?
Yes.
Discussion. I just, I'd just like to know why we have to build this out, I mean, he wants to build it back against the five-foot setback when he can build it out into his property and get into the, the 25-foot setback. I, I haven't seen the reason why it should be back against five-foot setback.
In terms of my view of this, the setbacks are for a number of reasons, including access for fire equipment and that sort of thing, and protecting the adjoining property owners, but in this case, I, when, when the adjoining properties on both sides are rights of way, public rights of way, and there'd be no other property owner impacted, it strikes me that the right to use your property to your personal advantage is being infringed on simply because of numbers in the book. And if the number in the book was all-powerful, then the issue wouldn't even be in front of us.
And I don't necessarily disagree with you, Mr. Chair, about people being able to use their property, but if, if we go into that theory, then it would seem to me like anybody that wants a variance, if they can get the neighbor next to them to agree, then these setbacks become null and void. And we, we just start letting people build right on the property line, because all you got to do is go to your neighbor, and if it happens to be somebody that you get along with, sure, I'll let you, I won't object to your building your garage on them, on, on the lot line or within a foot of the lot line, and then they up and sell it, and, you know, and then we got a, we got a mishmash of, of, of buildings out there. And, and granted here, it seems like it wouldn't create a big problem, but I guess if you're going to have rules, everybody should follow the rules. And if we're not going to have them, then we, as I've said before, we just do away with planning and zoning.
We do have five criteria that are set up in our zoning ordinance that rulings of variances are supposed to go by, and those are listed in my staff report in regards to what those five criteria are, or actually four criteria. Number one is that specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist. There is an argument that there is some exceptional narrowness, however, he could meet the setbacks even with that narrowness. Number two is that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular zoning district. Well, he is allowed to build a garage in any zoning district, so that doesn't apply. That due to specific circumstance or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. There is no unwarranted hardship in this case, he could meet the setbacks. Number four, that granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinances. Well, this is the section line right-of-way, and there's public highway right-of-way of Highway 40 that requires a 25-foot setback from any public right-of-way. And some of that is public health and safety, that they're set, set us back from those public right-of-way. There is the argument that the section line highway is not used other than for three driveways or three access points to private property. However, it is, still is public right-of-way, and someday could be improved in the future. Not, not necessarily likely, but it is a possibility, because it is public right-of-way.
Any further discussion?
What we'd need, Mr. Chair, what we'd need if we were going to do anything is a motion to reconsider the last vote.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And we'd need a second on that from anyone on the board. And then we'd have to have a four to one vote to approve the reconsideration, because it's a variance.
Not the reconsideration, but the actual motion to approve the variance you would have to have.
I thought since it's all entitled into one, that would still require a four to one vote for reconsideration.
You're not taking action on the variance, you're just taking that matter back up. If you take action on the variance, which would be the next vote after the reconsideration.
It'd be a separate.
Okay. Just, just to clarify, could we? Okay. Since I'm on the prevailing side and I asked for reconsideration, I will make a motion to ask for reconsideration.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Want to chime in one more time? I, I recognize the, the arguments on both sides, and I, they're both, they're both valid. I would, I would hope you'd consider that, I've, I have a little experience with the fire department down there, and I've seen how hard access is in the hills here sometimes, and I, I can see that as a problem down the road sometimes. So, I hope, that's my primary concern, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
This is to reconsider.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, we are back to square one.
I have a, have a question of the applicant. You're, you're asking for a five-foot setback, looks like if you spun that garage just a little bit, you could, you could stay within the 10-foot that has already been granted to you to put the house or the cabin in there. Would that be acceptable?
Well, originally, probably, yeah, I think that would be better than meeting the 25, that would give me more room to work with.
So, if that's the case, Dan, do we even need to take action?
It still requires a 25-foot setback, so you'd still need a variance to have a 10-foot setback.
And we can change that.
Does that mean?
Yes.
Mean the process has to go back to your office?
No, you could make that ruling right now.
As an amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Chair? I'd make a motion to allow this garage to be built to a 10-foot setback.
And grant the variance?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to grant the variance with a 10-foot setback for the garage. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
No, it's an opposition, but.
Okay, now, now Nancy, your motion may hold up.
I'd make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial or routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and zoning contains the following items. B, the second reading of a major planned unit development amendment for John, or PU 12-04 for John Marshack, and approval is recommended. Item C is the preliminary plat 12-38, Nina McBride and Sandy Varney, to be continued to the 12-18 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item D is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning request 12-12, Nina McBride, Sandy Varney, to be continued to the 12-18 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item E is a minor plat 12-40 in a subdivision regulation variance. 12-14, Parker Properties, approval is recommended with waivers. Item F is the first reading in a public hearing of rezoning 12-11, and comprehensive plan amendment 12-07, RMS Load, Matt Keck, and approval is recommended. Item G is a first reading in a public hearing of ordinance amendment OA 12-05, Pennington County to amend Sections 400.3-1, and 3, and 6, and 10, and Sections 500.5-1A, 3A, and Section 500.5, Table 1 of the Pennington County subdivision regulations, and approval is recommended.
Is there any commissioner that wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public wishes to remove such? If not, Chair, we'll entertain the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, items B, C, D, E, F, and G. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16, committee reports. Start with Nancy.
Well, it seems like almost every week there's two or three meetings of Mountain Pine Beetle, but.
Speak into your mic, please.
Oh, I apologize. Every week, oh, seems like we do something with Mountain Pine Beetle, but one of the things that we have been doing is working with local legislators, talking about how we might possibly come up with some different funding from the state that goes directly to the counties. And we've, we've had several meetings with legislators explaining the, why that would be a good idea. And in a nutshell, what we're saying is that all of the counties that are affected by Mountain Pine Beetle have a contract with the Forest Service and, and can work more closely with them. Everything is existing, and we can actually do more than, than if the state would have to go through the process of trying to get a contract and, and all of it, it's already set up. So, we're working on some of that, just to see if that's a possibility in the upcoming legislature.
And is that something that Commissioner Buschrude, as our legislative liaison, is prepared to pursue?
You know, and I apologize for that, Ron, I haven't talked to you about it.
No, I haven't.
I apologize, thanks.
Well, it would be interesting to see what the governor proposes today, which I'm sure is not going to include any money for the pine beetle.
It isn't, but maybe the process, and, and, you know, it's, we've talked to Secretary Bones and the governor, but what we're looking for is money, in Wyoming, what they did is they took money from like an emergency weed and pest fund that they have, and Secretary Bones is, is interested in looking at that. What he required from the local working group is a plan that says how you'll spend the money and how it'll be accountable. And we have developed that, that was developed, finished last week. So, you know, we're, we're pushing forward, trying not necessarily to have money come out of the budget, but come out of those pots of money that might be there that have been sitting there, and, and now is a good time to use it effectively. So, that's where we're heading with it, Ron.
I agree, and it's worth a try, anyway.
Mm-hmm, yeah, got to try it.
Thank you. Commissioner Holloway?
Just an update on the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative and the progress that we're making in that area and, and something new that's going to be taking place. I just recently saw some statistics on our detention numbers and what they've done over the past year. And we're into our second year with the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. And we are lowering the number of Pennington County kids in, in the juvenile detention facility. And an ironic part of it was, we actually lowered the number of kids going in, but their length of stay is increasing some. And, and I, I think that illustrates that, what, what is actually happening is we're putting the right kids in versus where we were putting a number more that needed to be there before. And so, some of those kids were going in and out in a real short period of time, which would then skew your average length of stay. So, I think we're making progress in that area. One other area that we're, that we're undertaking to take a look at is the disproportionate minority population impact at the detention center as well as into the criminal justice system. And, and part of that review or trying to come up with a action plan, we've decided to hire a consulting firm to come in and provide some technical assistance for us. The Hayward Burns Institute has agreed to come in and, and do some research, look at statistics. They've done this in other jurisdictions across the United States, so at least we won't be trying to reinvent the wheel on how you, how you can lower the, the number of minorities that are impacting the, the Juvenile Detention Center and the criminal justice system. We've, the, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Board will sign an agreement with the Burns Institute to come in. We're getting the funds to pay for this from the state. Total cost is going to be just under $40,000, it's $39,600. They'll be out a couple of times, or about three times, I think it is, to gather information and then come back and give us a presentation. The money will be passed through Pennington County from the state, so these funds are coming actually from some juvenile funds that the state gets from the, from the federal government. But this should happen starting in early 2013, and hopefully by the mid-year of 2013, we'll have some reports and can then start moving forward with implementing some, some plans on impacting that minority population.
Thank you.
I've had a couple of functions at the base lately, and another one this afternoon, and one of the retirement party, or going away charimony for the, one of the officers that's retiring. Lindell and I also went to the rail authority meeting that we had, had yesterday, and they're going to continue to have another meeting about this and maybe ask Mead County if they're interested in coming in, and, and Custer County, maybe Fall River County. So, we'll get back to, to that idea. We were invited to the library opening, and everybody went to that, and I'm going to let you speak to that, because that, that's yours and Don's.
I forgot, how can I forget that? We did have the official ribbon-cutting for the new library located on Western Dakota Tech campus. That is a collaborative effort, probably the first in the nation nearly, as we can tell, with the city, the, I mean, the Rapid City Public Library, the Rapid City School District, Western Dakota Tech, and Pennington County coming together collaboratively. It's a lovely facility, and lots of, lots of technology so that people from the public, as well as the schools, can go in and, and access information in many different ways. Another thing that's great about it is that it, it has lots of meeting space, so for the public to use it, it's a usable space. So, I, I was real pleased, we had a great turnout, too. I, you know, really great turnout. And I should thank Jay in front of you guys all, too, because Jay did a lot to help the county and represent the county the last couple of years as that came into being, and spent a lot of time. Thanks.
Okay, and one other item that I have, the chairman and I went to a meeting the other day at the Economic Development, and a lot of the school mines of, of West Dakota Water. I would like to say that the Pennington County Commissioners have been accused of a lot of things over the years, of doing things illegally, illegal meetings and things, but what I saw at that meeting, I don't think we've ever done any of that.
at that meeting, I don't think we've ever done any of that, and I'll let it go at that.
I think perhaps just to carry off from Ken, one of the significant things that occurred at that meeting was that the council of local governments announced that they would no longer provide executive services to West Dakota as of the end of this year. So there will be a transition there. Beyond that, also yesterday, I met in the afternoon with the city folks and others exploring the possibility of setting up a trade zone system here like they have in Sioux Falls for import-export. And some of that will be evolving into other meetings in January and 2013. Lot of factors involved, and quite a group of people that have some expertise and are pursuing that. Beyond that, I think tomorrow's a weed and pest board meeting, and that's all I have. Next item, unless we have further comments?
I would just make one comment about at that WOTEC library ribbon cutting. It was really pretty refreshing to listen to people from Western Dakota WOTEC, from the state, from the city, compliment the county on really stepping up and getting the ball rolling with that agreement that then finalized into a multimillion-dollar library and expansion to Western Dakota WOTEC. The other thing I thought that was ironic, and I think it speaks well of Jay, is that the agreement to put this all together was one piece of paper. So rather than a multi-page contract.
Anything further? Next item on the agenda is items from the public. Is anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Personnel and contractual.
Second. Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.